Your nomination.
So I'd like to call this Wednesday's meeting, December the third, meeting of the planning board to order. Before we get into any business, one of our colleagues passed away recently. David Mountain was a selectman for the last three years and he was on this board for eleven. He was the chair of the board. He oversaw the completion of the master plan, which was completed in two thousand and six. And he initiated a very forward-thinking aspect of our subdivision and zoning called the Open Space Residential, just OSRD, and his general overall leadership. So if it's okay with everyone, we'd just like a moment of silence and then we'll start our meeting, okay? Thank you. Okay. The meeting minutes, do you all have a chance to take a look at them?
Yeah, the only point I had Martha, on page three, at the top, there's a date change. You have December fifth instead of December three.
Oh.
Not a big deal.
Okay.
Okay, so just, so with that amendment, would you make a motion on that?
Yeah, moving except the minutes of the meeting of September.
November, November third, was it?
Number five.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
We'll be joined later by Kathleen Pearson, who is at her husband's birthday. And I'm surprised she's even gonna be here in the first place. And Elizabeth Mitchell is not able to make it tonight, so three of us will start off. So in, we have no public hearings tonight, but we have appearances and Mr. Roush, are you here? Why don't you come forward and let us know what you have in mind? Hi Martha, how are you? John, how are you? And I do know that this project proceeds, I think everyone on this board, were you here when it started?
Again?
Was this project when you were here?
No, it predates me by a month.
So we know it's been in existence for quite some time.
Right, right, I was here.
And Martha was there and so I think Martha, George has raised some issues on some concerns of just the technicality of what needs to be done, but do you have anything to add at this point in time?
No, I mean maybe we could turn it over to John and Martha and they could, you know, make their request.
Okay.
Well, just as an update, I mean the subdivision was started a very long time ago. And the binder coat was placed, how many years ago now? Okay. On the sidewalk, all the drainage, everything has been in place except for the final coat of paving. So that went in a couple of weeks ago and Tim Leonard, our engineer for the project, Scott Patrowitz and I did review it with John and Peter Confillon. And there were a few outstanding items, but nothing major.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then, but just one other aspect was that, I don't know if you all know, is that is that there is a provision in the regulations saying that we need to go through one full winter and making sure that the top coat is okay. I mean that's in the regulations, so I'm not sure if you all are aware of that. And so why don't you then tell us what you're up to?
Which is actually expired, drive bar time. But so we're looking to get the bulk of that money released. I think in the original schedule, there was a fifteen percent retainage.
Right, right. And so I guess the question I had Martha, and maybe you John, is what do we think is a reasonable amount to let go and what do we think we need to hold relative to protecting ourselves going, getting through the winter? And I just don't know the answer to that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned about the winter. It's had a binder down and being driven on, how many years?
Six or seven.
Six, okay. When the road fails, it's not the top coat that fails, anchor fails. It's gonna be the base underneath the binder. If the binder you put the top on was okay, and I'd expect it was.
Yes, Tim would get that.
Yeah, so you know, I can't get excited about that as an issue. I do want to, and it's just because we kinda got bitten the rear end on another job where stuff went out. It was another one that I, it was before my time, but nonetheless, I'm the only P on the board and I would rather, I would rather not sign my name off on something that I haven't looked at and I frankly haven't looked at it. But I can do that over the next couple of days.
Fair enough.
And does that have a, one of those gray infrastructure kind of stormwater things? A storm scepter or one of those gadgets?
Yes, no, we've had those pumped out.
They were pumped out?
Actually this past week.
Okay.
They cleaned those.
Have they been functioning okay as you went, as you've gone along?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd just like to talk to, is Scott gonna give us some advice on this? Said Tim, Tim is gonna give you some thoughts.
Yeah, I've asked Tim and Scott actually is out of town until Friday, so.
One of Tim's concerns was a couple places where we had the driveways meeting the street.
Yeah.
And so we did put some emulsion and stone dust in there per his recommendation. We did that last week after we met with him.
Okay.
So that's been cleaned up.
Is that most of it?
That was, and there's a hole in the sidewalk that we need to take care of.
Okay.
A hole about.
Is that an asphalt hole, an asphalt sidewalk?
Yes, yeah, no. And where we had some stonework to the side, I think we just had a little cement, just like I said, belt saw.
Well, that's easy enough to put a patch on it.
Right.
On the sidewalk, it's no big deal. So, other than I'd like to, you know, sometime in the next couple of days, I'll have a look at the drawings and have a look at the thing, talk to Tim and.
Yeah, you have some comments. Hi John, Martha, or Martha, excuse me. One of the things after reading the documents and your proposal for settling up, you make reference to the tripartite agreement, which really has expired, so that's all part of it. And that's a break in process. And if a title company were looking for that and wanting to see a chain of constant activity, continuity, that's a break. So I would suggest that the Fifth Amendment come into place and be recorded. And is that a problem?
The Fifth Amendment, I thought you meant.
You like to the Constitution?
Yeah, the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, right. Don't take the Fifth.
Well, we thought about that and Martha, who was that town council?
Ginny, Ginny Kramer.
Ginny, right.
Great.
So Ginny and I said, well, we could do one of two things. We could go back to the bank, have them extend the tripartite and then release it. Or we could simply post cash, you know, release the entire tripartite and then post cash for whatever is appropriate for the remaining work. And Ginny thought that that was a workable solution and one that would not require the bank to go back to committee to extend the tripartite, because that will take quite a while and they're probably tired of it.
Are you okay with the latter alternative?
Yes.
Cash, assuming it's not six percent.
Well, the only reason I say that is if you're gonna release from the tripartite agreement, that's already expired, so how do you rejuvenate that?
And anybody who looks at the title would see it still there. And the title attorney myself, I would say, let's get that thing released.
Well, it would be nice, right.
Right.
Now, I don't know what the possible amount might be in a passbook or cash. Martha, do you have any idea yet?
I'm waiting to hear back from Tim to see if he has some feeling and also from Scott to get a recommendation.
Are we talking a few thousand dollars or more?
I mean, the, what we were holding for the finished pavement was forty thousand two hundred and fifty, including retainage. Our subdivision rules and regs call for fifteen percent of the total, which obviously is, you know, more than, more than necessary.
I would think so, yeah, I think that would be unfair.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Especially support a waiver and work out something that's a little more fair, given the risk of this thing.
Right, and that was, you know, that was assuming that the binder and the drainage and everything else was.
All happened more or less at the same time, yeah.
Right, and that's been in place for years.
Well, it's a good thing to have in there, because it'll go to hell in the winter, if it's gonna go to hell at all. But apparently it doesn't want to, it's good. That's a good thing.
Unfortunately, it's been a while.
Okay, so that could. And there's not a lot of traffic?
No, it doesn't have a lot of traffic.
That could be a separate agreement between you and the town. Would it be really a supplemental guarantee and surety?
Yes, I mean you wouldn't have both the tripartite and the passbook, but what we're suggesting is give up the tripartite in exchange of additional security.
Right.
Storm scepter.
A document to back it up and a release process. Yeah, I would go along with that.
Oh, really? Well, not really, it's more like, do we have it? And is it a copy in Tim's hands?
I don't think that it would be an issue with them, at least I'm with the impression.
Or do we have it, I wanted to ask myself, just to know that we have it. Talking about, yeah, they can't do it at the price.
Well, I know that, but.
What is it anyway? I know there's a gadget there, but I don't know what it is.
And what's available with something else?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
We've gotta come up with a figure.
I agree, yes.
I'm not a fan of those personally. I know some people in the past have thought they were the answer to a maiden's prayer, but I think they're, you know, good things, great things for cities, but for small towns?
No, it's practical.
You don't have to do much to a ditch, you can, I bet you, these things break. Ditches don't break usually, anyway.
So Martha, what exactly do we do in terms of procedure at this point in time? And do we take a vote on something of, I mean, look, John needs to take a look at the project.
Well, I'd like to, I'm not sure I have to, but I'd like to, yeah.
No, I, I think you should. And then, do we, go ahead.
Well, I think the board needs to make a decision on, on, you know, whether the process that Martha and Ginny talked about of, you know, essentially doing supplemental and not.
Well, now, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with the supplemental.
Okay.
In other words, we'll hold a passbook, right?
Right.
That's right, that's right.
It's a new surety, that's another way of doing it.
And then we'll figure out what the amount is, but that will be done between Ginny and yourself. And then, we don't need to see it again, but we should take a, a vote on, on what's been proposed by you and then approved by Ginny.
Well, and the board should take a vote on the amount that's being held.
Yeah, and.
Well, what do we, but what is that?
We don't know, Tim's coming in with it.
I'm saying, how do we take a vote on that?
In this schedule, we have completed the other work as well, it was the, you have it?
Yeah.
There was the.
Oh, I don't have, where is that?
Oh, it's in the.
That was part of tri, the tripartite.
Second.
Ah, okay.
Second amendment. Towards the end of the second. I think we can do everything except the exact amount. We could, you'd like to have it tonight?
We'd like to, so we can get the bank over and forward.
Yeah, I understand.
So we can pay subcontractors and everything else.
But the payment contractor is.
He wants to get paid.
Well, we gave him ten grand last, last month.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Sure, well.
And the money is sitting there.
With all due respect, we didn't know that we were on the critical path of this and it's a little unfair to make us the bad guys in this.
Absolutely.
Do you have an idea of what you think would be fair?
We got an obligation to the town, you know.
You mean for us to hold five?
Five thousand.
So we release fifty-five?
Have we, we haven't heard from Tim. You said that Scott is gonna come in with a number also?
Well, he's, he, he reviewed it right before he went on vacation, so we haven't had any chance to to have a discussion about it.
And he will be back next week?
He's back on Friday.
A week from?
No, this coming Friday.
This coming Friday, okay.
I didn't have a sense that he was going to give us a number.
I, I didn't either, but I, you know, it's, but he does, he does do that, make a recommendation.
The hole in sidewalk.
Right.
The joining of which we've taken care of and then a little bit along the, where it meets the curve.
John, are you comfortable, are you comfortable coming up with a number right now?
No, I haven't seen it.
And I'm still a little concerned.
Maybe we can take a vote.
This only just came out of the woods. You need to look at the drawings, you need to look at what's in place.
Release funds, the amount to be determined in coordination with yourself and John and sometime in the next week, and then that's the final amount? Hold on, let me, let me have her see her answer to this.
Out there.
In other words, leave it to our judgment, collective judgment?
Leave it to your judgment, because you've been involved with it and it's your expertise and it, you know, it's, it's not the lawyer and the planner who know this. It's, so I would kind of suggest that, but what, now you wanna interject?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I'm Peter Confillon, I'm a co-developer. I spoke with the bank today. I speak to the bank a lot.
Of course.
I'm the bank guy. So what the bank needs is now that they know that they're obligated with an expired agreement, they, what they would like to see is they would like to get a release and basically give us, release all the money to us. We in turn would, would only get that letter from this board when we walked in with a passbook in, in the required amount. That's, that's the trade. So I think what, what I would be looking for tonight is an action by this board that, that basically said, we agreed to release Eastern Bank from their obligations under their expired agreement. And this, this document, letter, I guess, would be presented to the developer when he delivers a passbook in, in some amount, in some agreed-upon amount.
With some agreed-upon amount.
Yeah, we can leave it a little vague.
Agreed upon between the parties.
Well, I like your idea though of saying in an amount of five thousand, suing.
Martha and I just had a quick side conversation. Six, because there's an issue, there is an issue.
Yeah, see, that's the problem with being a little too specific.
There was an issue, there's another issue that I had forgotten about, at the sidewalk under the bridge.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, so those things can happen, all right.
I, I think we can kinda leave it a little fuzzy and, you know, if you called up next Monday and said, you know, we got the report back from somebody, can you make it sixty-two fifty or something like that? That's not a deal breaker. What we wanna do is we wanna get the big chunk released so we can get the paver paid and a couple of other people paid.
I would wanna see what George thinks about that. I think this could be crafted in a way to make me happy, but I would defer to George's opinion.
Yeah, no, it can be done, the only, I would have some concern about the number just to exercise prudence and conservative approach. Would seventy-five hundred bucks be okay with you? Instead of sixty-two?
You mean just to come up with that now?
Well, in the passbook.
We need a specific number.
In the passbook.
How about an amount up to seventy-five and then you two?
Yeah, if we do an up to, I'd be more inclined to go to a higher number and just depend on us to deal with you and each other in good faith. I mean, we're not gonna make it.
We've done everything that we've been asked to do for the last ten years, you know.
Yeah, and we really have to fill the.
Yeah, we checked all the boxes.
Yeah, so seventy-five hundred, I thought was a pretty good up to.
With the understanding that you'd like it yesterday, what's your timeframe? In other words, when do you really want to have this done?
I'll show you the bill.
I, I don't need to see the bill, what I really need to know is what is.
We'd like to get it before, we don't really wanna wait till the next month here.
Oh, so you want it sometime between?
Why do I pay the contractor, I'm sure you know him too, that's relevant.
Well, just so you know, we, we meet again on the.
My buddy Phil Knowles.
Seventeenth of December, so we don't.
Two weeks, yeah.
We, we'll meet again in two weeks.
How would that work for you? I mean, I know you wanna.
We had everything tied up then.
That could be tied up perfectly.
Then we'd have everything. And none of this wishy-washy stuff. You know wishy-washy.
That's a hard call for me to make tomorrow.
I, I kind of understand where they're coming from. I, I really don't want it being, but I understand you have it.
I mean, we gave him ten last month just to, you know, and said, Phil, just let us get to December third. All the work is done, you know, the subdivision's a hundred percent.
Well, I'm sure the plant doesn't wanna hear this from him either.
No, he wants to clean it up, you know, and I've done this one twenty-five years, you know.
There's another way to approach it, is release a lesser amount, release fifty-five thousand.
I don't know what to say for a number, because I have, I've driven through it. The last time was about a year ago and I never, never looked at the drawings, I wasn't on the board when this thing started.
There's some asphalt here.
Right, which I've got in my office.
Yeah, we've got asphalt.
Well, I'll come in tomorrow and look at it. In fact, if I could borrow them, I gotta go out to Triton anyway at eleven, so I'll go out and look at it.
I've got five copies I can give you. And I so wonder Scott.
See what he thinks and come back to you with an opinion by the end of the day tomorrow. It's just if we could have this conversation a few days ago and someday in the morning on a second, and all this last week, and then I'd be a happy, happy customer.
Peter, let me ask you, how much is being held by the bank right now? It's about sixty-seven thousand?
About sixty.
About sixty.
Sixty thousand, six seventy-four.
Six seventy-four.
What the bank wants is they want a letter that says, you don't have to hold any money anymore. You know, because they're basically, they've got this.
They don't wanna hold any.
They're holding money on an expired agreement.
Right.
So, and, and we're saying, well, the work is done. And they said, well, just get some documentation that says we don't have to hold it anymore. Give it to you guys, we'll advance the funds, you can pay your bills. And if there's, there's a small balance or retainage, just do the passbook, it's neat, it's clean. I've done it a lot of times.
If we authorize the bank to distribute fifty thousand dollars and reduce the loan down to ten?
That, that doesn't make it go away.
I know, but that, it's gonna go away within a couple of weeks after this, hopefully.
So you're saying we do that now?
Do fifty now and do the ten, do the ten in, in two weeks.
Take some of the burden off of you.
Okay, do fifty, you got more than enough.
We'll do fifty now and we'll do ten in two weeks.
Great.
All right, let's have a motion on both.
So what are we doing?
Well, I'm waiting for George to see if he can cast the motion.
We're gonna two-step it really, because we have a motion to authorize the bank to release fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And retain ten thousand dollars, subject to terminating the agreement in approximately two weeks. Then the second motion would be to agree to hold up to seventy-five hundred dollars for completion of work. And that would be, well, we had the vote on the first motion, so why don't we do that?
Yeah, let's vote on the first one. Okay, so that's the motion, is there a second?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so that's passed.
Then second motion to.
Well, do we need the seventy-five hundred if we're doing, doing it that way?
Well, we still need to hold something, we wanna hold something through the.
All of it. So then we would have a motion to accept the passbook in an amount up to seventy-five hundred dollars as determined by town council, the engineer and Martha, to be held as surety for completion of the work up through in the spring sometime. Yeah, no, I understand.
No, we know that.
We'll go through a winter at that point.
Then it would be released by then, if everything's complete, then.
We'll hold them to that.
Seventy-five, yeah, so seventy-five, so seventy-five hundred, do you get that written down Martha, so we know?
Yeah, an amount, accept a passbook in the amount of seventy-five, up to seventy-five.
Up to seventy-five hundred, okay.
And that passbook is that amount, we'll hang on to that until spring.
Until the spring.
Okay.
Second? Second? All those in favor?
All right, and simultaneous with all that, then we could say to the bank, you can release the rest after we have the book.
Okay.
Right, that's a good idea.
Then finally, we have to agree on the agreement, right? Or do we not?
Yes, we do, yeah.
So how do we phrase that, George?
Is that gonna be drawn up at all?
The tripartite, right.
Yeah.
And you're, you're releasing?
Yeah, that will be good.
So actually, we don't have to approve that until we get it?
Right.
So, well, I guess we should take a vote saying that in, the principle of what you've proposed has been accepted by the, by our town council and we're asking you to draw that up, to bring it back to us and we'll approve it and sign it, okay? All right, we're doing, let's, second?
You just made a good motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that should do it.
Yes, thanks very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I just make a quick comment, I'd never seen your project. And I just couldn't believe the amount of infrastructure that you put into that project. I mean, it is, I mean, I know, that is very expensive stuff.
Probably couldn't believe it either.
Man, that is big, big money. And you have five homes built.
Four of them.
And four to go, but where are they at? When I drove out there today. Oh, so the, so the common driveway is not, has nothing to do with what we're talking about right now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The lots are beautiful.
We've looked on everything on the, on the public, proposed public way.
Okay.
So all the heavy construction that would, you know, above the public way is done.
So anything will now be up on private land.
And, and that will be done by individual homeowners? And any, or who's ever developing it? But you're selling, am I right, you're selling those lots to?
Peter's built all the houses there.
I built all the houses.
So will you continue to build the houses or will they be done by?
It's been a slug, you know, it's, it's been hard.
Everything I say is, I saw a sign saying lot for sale, so.
And that's my number, that's a damn good one.
We will sell a lot to a, to a person, but we want to retain plan approval, citing the house, and we wanna approve their building.
That's understandable.
Yeah, we have no problem if somebody wants to bring a builder in, we just wanna, we wanna see them, see what they're gonna build and, and we wanna know who's gonna do it.
I'm not sure it's a theme, but you've got a quality that you're doing.
Well, we wanna protect the values.
And then we need to protect the values, yeah.
Good relationships there with, with customers.
Right.
Good relationships and we wanna preserve them.
Oh, good, it's a nice project.
Thank you.
Congratulations, okay. Oh man, it's unbelievable. Mr. Wuhan? Come on up. But you have a, yeah, you do have, so, so actually, although we usually like to sit around here if you've got the presentation, and, and, because it is a presentation. Speak in, no, speak into that mic, okay?
I mean, seriously, what is up with you? You're my child.
Yeah, no, I was the baby. Ready for this?
Make compensating, pass you?
The lone surviving male in the lineage of my family.
Yes, sir.
Yes, for me.
Would you push them all off?
Two older sisters and I grew up in a house, she's a great aunt. And a great aunt.
So you just were squished and now you're on the table?
Yeah, no, I've been, I've always looked for big houses, stuff.
We all said?
Should we be, you're gonna pass those out or?
Oh, they're part of submission.
Oh, okay. I don't know what we're supposed to look at now, that's why I was asking.
Well, yeah, tonight, basically, they're submitting the site plan review application, so the board will need to vote to accept it.
Accept it, that's what we're doing.
And then set a date for the, the public hearing, but we're gonna have to coordinate with the selectmen on that, because it's also a special permit for the water supply protection overlay district.
Are they able, they can hold a public hearing, but they need a straight royal flush.
They need four, yeah, they'll, they'll need to have four vote in affirmative, right.
Yeah, we're down to selectmen.
So, and I do have enough copies here to give you each a copy.
Oh, great, great.
Great.
So in terms of, not to hold you off, but in terms of setting a date, then you just coordinate that with?
Well, I think my suggestion actually would be to, to set two potential dates. One would be for the board's first meeting in January, or.
Which would not be a joint.
Well, and to have the selectmen vote to hold their hearing on the same date or to do it on their first meeting in January. So I'm thinking maybe if the board could vote on two acceptable dates.
Let's do that, and then you'll work it out which one it is. So it'll either be on a Wednesday night or a Tuesday night, okay? Depending upon what's convenient for the board of selectmen. I usually say, you know, it's their show, you know?
So, and I asked Bob just to give a very brief overview. So, and I asked Bob just to give a very brief overview. Mike had done it before, but now we've got engineering involved. And redesign of the septic system, so this is really just to, to give an overview of, of the project as it's developed.
This is just basically a formal submittal, just a rough draft of what we're proposing. My name's Bob Grassel, for the record, from Engineering Land Services. My cool hand is the applicant, just sitting right in front of you. The site's located at seventy-six Newbury Turnpike. It's Assassin's Map, R forty-seven, Lot sixteen. And on the record, it's Lot four, and it consists of roughly thirty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-one square feet. It's a vacant lot right now. It's roughly a real grass, low-lined shrub lot. Some wetlands located off the site, shown right here in blue. We have a fifty-foot wetland setback, a hundred-foot wetland setback. What we're proposing to do, it's, it's zoned in the BLI, the Business Light Industrial District. As Martha had stated, we're also in the water supply protection overlay district, which is a special permit required by the selectmen. So that, that encompasses some more drainage treatment for the site. Which also requires a site plan review by the planning board. What we're proposing to do is a mixed-use, commercial-use part of the building would be a yoga studio. And the other part would be four office, professional office units. The total square gross floor area of the building would be five thousand two hundred and ninety-five square feet. Which is shown in brown right here. We're proposing parking, there's twenty, let me see, the required parking, per the zoning article, requires twenty-seven standard stalls, which we are supplying twenty-seven, with also two handicap stalls, shown up. It is located on a Mass Highway layout, which is a roofed layout, which would require a Mass State permit, Curcata permit, for the entrance to the site. That would be through Mass here. This would be a paved drive, two ways in, to the traffic flow right here. In the back, it would be a one-way around the building for fire protection. Whereas a drive-up, there would be an exit-only sign, so that nobody would enter this, this way. They'd come up pot here, return this way, or go around the building.
What are the, it looks like the building, and then there's two orange structures on both sides.
Those are underground infiltrator systems.
Okay, stormwater.
With stormwater, which is half, half the flow, the roof would go this way, half the flow would this way.
Okay.
Would be treating all the drainage from a parking lot. Would be a sheet flow towards a, a grass swale with some mini catch basins, which would, with sumps in them as treatment for oil, sand, and greases. And then that, that would be piped into an underground infiltrator system below the parking lot.
So.
We have two units.
If you weren't in the water district, would those still be proposed?
Yeah, would be both. We just, we have to increase the amount of infiltrators because we're.
So Bob, is this what we see from, if I'm coming south on Route one?
Yes.
Yes, on the arc.
And if I'm coming north, I would see probably something that looks like this, I guess. I mean, it's up high, though. How, how high is it?
It's about, the base could be about eleven, twelve feet.
Oh, it's not that high. I thought it was higher, but.
Depends on how fast you go.
Yeah, I know that. You could miss it. Could miss it. So that's what you see coming north, and the others?
The driveway going in would be a seven-decent slope, going off Route one up here, and then we would level out slightly.
And, and you're parked, do you have, you have parking all around there? I know you talked about it, but I just, I was confused.
We're starting number one through, there's five spots in the rear.
Yeah.
Parallel parking. And right parking through here, here, and in the front with the two handicap spots right there.
So how many spaces are there?
There's twenty-seven.
Is that code, or is that, did you check code?
That's from the parking, from our parking bylaw.
It says it right on the plan, parking.
Thanks. And you're, you're okay with that? Or do you want more than that, or is that okay?
I think that's what we wanna do for the site for right now. There is some added to each one. Basically, also, we're actually, we'd be following an RDA with the conservation commission for the site also, because we're working in the buffer zone here. We're actually proposing a storage area of twelve hundred square feet, which is required for that amount of parking. Snow storage for right here, piling right here.
Oh, really?
Which is on a level area, and we'll also be creating a grass swale.
Snow storage.
Around it, so when it melts, it would be treated. And then we're also proposing some plantings right here. And then, when it, when it hits the grass swale, actually, the snow would be stored, something like this, and then when, as it melts, it gets treated in the grass swale. And whatever overflows would go down the slope into the wetlands.
Okay.
And then that's all, you know, that's from the snow. All this drainage would be treated in the infiltrators, you get the north and the south. And then whatever comes down the road would be a contact storm scepter, which is one of those units that he's, the swirling units, that he likes.
That John likes?
That John likes?
John likes it, oh.
We're proposing trench drains. The water would come down, go on the trench drains, and go into this contact unit. And that would be treated with a sump, all the greases and the oils, and then the sand would be trapped on the bottom. And then it would release with a twelve-inch pipe down to a natural swale that goes down into the wetlands, it would be treated before.
And so you're doing an, an RDA and not an NOI?
An RDA, yeah. I just talked to that. We'd be sending that to D P, what the drainage report also. So they'd be reviewing the drainage report and the RDA.
Do you have a, a date with the ConCon?
No, we, we want to file with you first, to see, and then get reviewed by the consultant. And then do the changes, if there are any, our, if there are any changes. And then, you know, I don't wanna submit a plan and all of a sudden stop submitting revisions to the project.
Yep.
Bob, on the roadway going around the back of the building.
Yeah.
You said that was for fire protection.
Well, it's for fire access.
Access. Have you had any discussion with the fire department?
No, that's one of the, that's part of the site plan review. That's the, all the, that's why we give you sixteen copies, so all the departments, every department, fire department, police.
But nothing preliminary, okay.
This is just a formal thing. There was a septic system design approved for this lot, for a building that was located over here. And it was actually a little further this way. We had to move it, but we stayed within the test pits. So we had to actually redesign the septic system. So that will be also resubmitted to the Board of Health.
Okay.
So you've done test pits for a septic, and have you, have you found, what about wells and about water supply?
The site will have its own, it has a well right now.
Oh, it does.
We're only gonna abandon that well, and we're gonna propose a new well right here, because it's too close to the proposed septic system. So here's the new proposed well with the hundred-foot radius. There's nothing on this site. The existing, we've located the systems on the site, this site, and there are wells.
Who owns that? You don't own that property next door. Is that Richard?
Which one? This one?
Yeah, that.
That's Irving.
No, that's the middle street, the residential homes behind it.
They're actually Seven Middle Road.
Okay.
He won't know the name. He'll just know the house.
Seven Middle.
You cross like where the solar is across from that, that driveway.
Bob, do you have test pits and the infiltrators as well?
Uh, no, those are stone trenches.
Oh, right, right, right.
Stone trenches for the septic system.
But you don't have anything on what's underneath that?
Oh, for the, for the infiltrators. Oh, there'll be eighteen inches of stone.
Okay, but as far as what's under the stone is my question. You did not do a test pit in those locations?
Oh, no, we, we use the test data. There's one, there's a test data right here. We used the soil logs from another engineering company.
Oh, okay.
I did not conduct the soil.
I see, yep, okay.
They're on record with the Board of Health, so we use that data to design our septic, a septic and drainage system.
Okay, we've all asked our questions, too. Others have any further questions, Martha, or comments?
Um, no, I went, I went through the draft submission, and Bob picked up a bunch of comments that he, that I had about that, so. I think everything is there. I'm, they've provided a check, both for the submission and also a deposit for the consultant. I'm assuming that with the stormwater design, that we would probably wanna have our consultant take a look at it.
I think we probably should, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think we've gotten to this yet, this far, but we're gonna wanna see a landscape plan. I don't know if that was submitted in the package or not. And we're also gonna wanna have an idea of what you're doing for signage.
Signage is.
Okay, good, good.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, landscape plan becomes important. The, the location of the building is a bit different than most of the other stuff on the street, but how you handle your entryway, et cetera, is important.
Just explain why.
Well, you, you're, you're an integral part of what we're trying to do. We've got a use across the street that we think is a, a major improvement for Route one. The new, the new Harmony, it's not daycare, but it's. And, and what I see here is a good-looking building, and so we're trying to make it attractive, not just for you, but that other people, when they see this, will say this is a good place to invest.
It's not that we don't think that you'll do a good job. We just wanna know what you're doing, that's all.
Yeah.
That's all. So you understand. We've required all businesses that have come through over the past two years to do the same, so it's not anything different.
Yeah.
There is landscaping shown, and this was one of the comments I had, that the board might want a landscaping plan. There is information shown on this drawing, but there's a lot of information there. It would be helpful to have a separate.
If, if you do something, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, board, but usually what we're trying to do is more beautify the area. Your site wasn't a hideous site that we're trying to correct. It's just more of the, yes, so it's more.
There's some out there that.
So do you understand, like, for example, like where the trailers were on Route one, we had them put together and landscaped, trying to beautify, 'cause there's new business going in. Angelo had to do something for his new building that's coming in, so that's kinda, we're just trying to get an idea that you're doing something, that's all. Okay.
We needed to, you know, with a reason to.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's beautiful. Now, if you came to our existing place now.
Given the business, I know that you're gonna do something, but because we've asked other businesses, we can't just exempt you. We have to ask for it, too.
Are you the yoga studio in Byfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you gonna keep that one? You are moving. This is the old deal.
What is your timeframe?
So do you own that building? You don't. That's why you're moving.
What is, what is your timeframe? ASAP.
Yeah, well, we, we'll, we'll get on this. So we need to vote to accept this.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Second? Someone?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we've accepted, then vote to set a, a date for the public hearing? Either the?
January seventh or the following Tuesday.
Because they, January, yes. Either one would be with the selectmen, but it's a question of.
When is the election?
February.
February.
Aye.
Number eighteenth, I think.
So it's either the seventh or the thirteenth, twelfth?
Excuse me?
I forgot to bring my calendar out, so.
Thirteenth, thirteenth.
Yeah, so.
Thirteenth. Okay, could I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so we're, I think we're all set. We, Martha will let you know.
Right, so.
We have to coordinate with the board.
We have to coordinate with this board of selectmen.
Right.
To save you money. That's why we're coordinating.
And time. And so this will be submitted to the selectmen at their meeting next Tuesday, the ninth, and we'll propose those two dates for them, and.
And what they choose is what we'll do.
What they choose, and then I'll put together the public notice for the joint public hearing and give that to Bob. Yeah, yeah, and the newspaper.
Well, we're excited. We hope that you're excited. We think it's kind of a great improvement.
Yes, we do. Good luck. Bob, nice to see you.
Good luck.
We'll see you again.
All right, he's back, he's back in town.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grassel, you're still here.
This is a special election.
Now, do you have that plan? Do you have, it was sent to us. But, um, let me take, yeah, but this is for. Sorry that you have to wait, but this should be fast.
Just don't take the checks.
Better than Wednes, better than Wednesday night at the movies.
One, two, three, yes, pass that down? Does everybody, that needs these?
What is this? This is, oh, this is the seventy-six.
You already have one of those, don't you?
I have one of these. Do you, do you have one of these? Rendering?
There you go.
We have, oh, and we have the.
I've got three things here.
I think I got more than that.
Stormwater report. I only have one of these. I don't know that, this'll be Greek to me.
There's more, there's more here.
Martha, is this yours?
Okay. All right, I've got a, I've got a major site plan. I've got a, set a rendering. I've got the site plan application. I've got a stormwater. That's it? Is it in there?
I gave it back, 'cause I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Okay.
I thought you only had one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
The summary.
Okay. So, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to add, you know, I forgot with the first group that was here, if you could, 'cause we need to hear you, and it, because it's recorded. 'Cause you're on TV.
Is he in the next one, too?
Yeah, he's, he's on. C N R down on Newbury Neck Road.
The, the people on TV, they actually listen to us. They watch us. They need to hear you in there.
They do.
Yes.
That microphone will come off on it.
No, yeah, take, take it off of there and just hold it, Bob, and then you can, you'll be heard and.
And Bob, do you suppose to say like, hello, Newberry?
Just turn yours around. I didn't actually submit these.
Okay.
Did anybody go down and take a look at this?
So the check wasn't, would it have to be contingent on the receiving payment?
Might be.
Yeah, Brett, grab the mic and just explain it, so the public can hear it as well.
This is not this far, correct?
This is not this far.
No, this is not this far.
No, this is, for the record, my name's Bob Grassel from Engineering Land Services. Site is located twenty-one Newbury Neck Road. It's Lot three.
And three, and you wanna split it to?
It's R O six, Lot three, Assassin's Map. What we're proposing to do is break the lot into two lots. The original lot would stay as Lot three, and the second lot would be Lot three A. The, it's zoned in the R A G district, which is requires forty thousand square feet and thirty-two square, thirty-two thousand square feet of continuous upland and a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. Lot three A consists of a hundred and forty-five point eight-sevenths of frontage, and Lot three of a total frontage of two hundred and forty-nine eighty-seven. Lot three is twenty-sixty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet. The original lot would have a hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four square feet.
It's about three acres.
Yeah. Two point eight, three point seven.
Yeah.
This is the proposed new lot line right here. The existing dwelling is shown right here, is twenty-one. It's eighty-three feet from the new line. Their existing septic system is located right here, that's seventy-one feet from the line. They're serviced by town, I mean, by a private well, shown right here. The proposed dwelling would be located at the rear of the site, with a long driveway coming off of Newbury Neck Road.
Is it located there also because, 'cause I was trying to look at it on Google Maps. Does it have, does it have the views? It does have the view?
It's the highest point, and it'd have a nice view of the marsh. The edge of wetland is located on the bottom.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Here. We have a flood zone of elevation thirteen. The flood map's right here, we're showing right here. And the, there's also another line. It's an area of environmental, area of critical environmental concern from the Mass GIS mapping, and that's that line shown right here, the dash, dash, dot line right here. So we can't affect anything past that one.
And there's more than enough contiguous upland.
And we did do soil testing with the Board of Health, these two test pits and the perk test. We have submitted sanitary disposal system designs, plans to them. They are. Um, they are, they are under review, um, so they just, they only need a board approval. Yeah, the agent just, just approved it.
He's got it on.
Oh, I want to make sure you could review it before we endorse the A&R, that's all.
There's no conservation filing, just the Board Health files.
Let's just start that. John, any questions?
I don't have any, no.
How about water?
Martha, did you, you're all set?
Just curious.
Uh, wells, it would be a well.
Okay, but you've got no wells drilled at this point?
No. They would have to do that before they have a...
Do you have any questions?
I have one, actually, I reviewed it, Bob incorporated my comments. I, I did have one question after the fact. I noticed that the deed and the assessor's records have it as about eight acres, and the survey was a little over six.
Yeah, six point five.
So, so that acre just is taken from there.
They said roughly eight acres back then, it's an old deed.
Right, no, I know, I know, I know that, right.
Not uncommon to have a missing by 30%, you know.
It is usually that common?
Yeah.
That's a rather large, that's a large discrepancy, though, but...
Wow.
Yeah, because, well, it's a...
If David Powell were here, he would let you know that...
Okay, so if anything, this is more conservative, because it's six, not eight, then?
Yeah, right, right, right.
And this is more accurate than the deed, if it's based on survey.
Martha, you would have no problem, I mean, you know the area, no problem as far as this proposed driveway having good, reasonable access from the actual road itself?
Yeah, I don't have any, any issues. The wetlands are all in the back of the, back of the lot, so there's no crossing there or anything like that, and there are no other obstructions like guardrails or...
And there's no prodding getting snow off the driveway? Nothing blocking it from being plowed off?
Shouldn't be, that's pretty flat in there.
Yes, well, it's, uh, it's a pretty flat lot. All flat, fine.
So I did have a question, though, because I was, I went, because I was not familiar with the site. And it says on your plan, storage structure up in front.
Right, yeah.
And so when I looked at it today, it looked like people were living in it.
It's a temporary, I'm not sure, the, you just told me, I said, "What's going on with this building?" It's a temporary storage building. Uh, it's an existing storage building, but there's someone...
Who's living in it?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So I guess the question I would have is...
I think that's a valid question. If it says storage and there's someone living in it.
Well, that's...
Is there even plumbing?
All right, so, so that raises some concerns, or, well, we can't have two houses on one lot. And, uh, just can't have it.
Well, is there plumbing attached to it? That'd be my first question.
Yeah, I don't know, but that, technically, that's something that Sam is gonna have to deal with when they apply for a permit. It doesn't affect the A&R endorsement.
Because this is proposed, and there's already one, there would just be one other dwelling on it, right?
But you'd have two dwellings on one lot.
No.
That's, you're right, that's for Sam to...
If that's the case, they, they could, if someone was living there, they'd have to abandon this and live in this.
Right.
And that would be converted to...
But I'm assuming that this is the owner here, and the owner is, owns all of this right now, right?
To build this house, they need a building permit, and Sam will catch that...
Yeah.
On the way.
That's true.
Yeah, he has to inspect the foundation, so when he walks through the site...
And we could also flag it for him.
I would like to flag it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do the, do the owners actually live on the adjacent lot, because they own, they own two lots, contiguous? That, okay.
Gloria owns both 221 and, or 21 and 23?
Actually, the other one is 2 Marsh Ave.
Oh, that's 2 Marsh.
Yeah.
2 Marsh. Okay. Okay.
So Martha, you don't see any issues with it, right?
I don't, I don't see any issues with it.
No, the only thing I saw was that...
It meets frontage and area. And when I give Sam his copy, I'll just, I'll flag that.
Well, just saying that we did, we did notice it, we did notice it, that's all.
We're not criticizing you. We're not criticizing you.
We just let, let the owner know that we noticed it, okay? It was the lace curtains and the...
And the smoke coming out of the chimney.
They gave it away. Okay, do we have a, George, any?
No, I have no further questions.
Have a motion?
Move to approve.
To endorse.
Endorse. Endorse? Okay.
Endorse.
You endorsed the A&R, right?
Second?
George did?
I did.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Okay, now...
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, I guess I have.
Yeah, we need to sign these, however, since, um, since I don't seem to have a check, um, I can't re... I'd release it when the check comes down.
Was this just me signing, or does everyone have a...
No, just, just you.
So we can, I can sign, I can sign it, I can sign it anytime.
Yeah, and I've got the copies of the A&R, too.
Yes. That, you have two hands.
Thanks, Bob. I think we're gonna do it after you've...
Yeah, since, since you can't take the Mylar tonight, we'll do it after the meeting, so we don't hold everybody else up.
Just call Martha when it's done. As soon as we get the check, I'll come in and sign it, it's not a big deal.
I, I wasn't aware that the...
I think this is you.
I told him when he brought the application, that I put the...
She's not mad at you. She's just saying that she's not gonna do anything, so you give them money.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night, Bob. Are you the next one, too?
No.
Oh, no. All right.
Are you the Carbones?
Yes.
Oh, we weren't sure you were gonna be here tonight. Well, why don't you come forward, and if you can do the same thing by grabbing that microphone, so that we, and then bring, bring those chairs up, so you can sit here and, it's not that...
This one's yours, right, yeah?
So you are George Carbone, and you are...
Deborah.
Deborah Carbone.
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you all. Um, so why don't you just explain what you are proposing?
We're, we're proposing just to do a lot line realignment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is our home right here, 123.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is 121 right here. We're just gonna do a lot rea-, this is our whole piece of property right now, and we're just gonna do a lot, uh, realignment. We're gonna move this, this is my property line right now, this, this line in here, we're gonna move it over to here, and this line's gonna go away, and this, this is gonna be the back of 121. So 121 is gonna be this square, like this.
Mm-hmm.
And then 123 would be this whole piece.
So you're flip-flopping, right now, one of you owns the back portion, and you're
changing it, so...
I actually own everything.
You own everything.
I own everything right now.
Okay, so one lot owns the back portion, and then the proposed changes, the, you're flip-flopping, the other house owns the back.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're actually joined, Lot A1 is gonna be joined to Lot B, which is, I mean, Lot C, which is us, 1, 2, 3.
Okay.
Parcel Y is gonna be joined to Lot C, which is us, 1, 2, 3. And then on Lot, which will make us all one lot.
Got it.
Okay, and then Parcel X, Parcel Z, and they only use Parcel Z just to make it easier to understand, which is actually Lot B. Parcel X is going to be joined to Parcel Z to make all of Lot B, so this little piece here will be joined to Lot...
What we do is, we just kinda square, we squared off the lot.
We squared off the lot.
That's all, that's all we were doing, really.
So there were two lots or three lots being with?
No, this was, this, this was...
It started as one.
This actually, actually, there was two lots, yeah. This was our house lot right here.
Yeah.
That little lot right there, and this was the, this whole thing was another lot. This was divided up and given to us.
Okay.
All right, so now, our son lives right here.
Oh, it's just, okay.
So what we're doing is, we just, we just squared off this lot plan.
Okay.
Basically.
All right.
So, and then what we're gonna do is, we, we are gonna own this whole piece of property right here.
We have to have new deeds drawn up.
So we need new deeds drawn up, and, so we just gotta have the, all the lot lines adjusted and...
This is, it's up a little high?
Yes.
Yours is?
Yes.
And his is a little over?
No, this is a whole lot.
Both about the same?
Both of our driveways are about...
15, 20 feet or something like that, right?
Yeah, at least, oh, yeah.
Okay.
And this is a follow-up to an A&R that the board endorsed last February.
Yes, I was just gonna say.
I do actually have that.
Yeah.
So what did we do last February?
So what we did last February was, um, this lot was existing, this lot was existing, this was carved out of this larger...
That's right.
This is all trying to sort out an estate.
Estate.
Um, and this was to be combined with that lot under that A&R.
So all of this property here belongs to this address?
This address.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Okay, that's Big Cunningham's daughter.
Yes. That's Jimmy, no, it's Jimmy, that's Jimmy, well, Jimmy Cunningham lives.
Yeah, but...
Right next door to us. Jimmy lives right next to us.
I'm looking at Roger's bucket.
Well, that's because they, they're the executive estate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Martha, do you see any issues with it?
I know where that is.
I don't. I had a long conversation with their attorney, and the one thing, um, you know, he explained to me, it seemed like it was a little more complicated than it needed to be, but he explained that this is what he needed to have in order to write the deeds on the title and the whole sequence of events, and the one thing I asked him to do, which I, has been, um...
To be combined with Lot C.
With Lot C. That wasn't on the drawing before, so now it's very clear that this becomes...
Merged, and it's not a landlocked lot?
Right, right.
Okay.
So that, that has been done.
This has been a long, drawn-out...
Nothing's easy today.
Five years.
Pardon me?
Nothing is easy today.
Nothing is easy.
Five years.
Okay.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Move to endorse.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set.
Do you have enough copies, Martha?
No, but you need...
Deborah's got, Deborah's got the copies, I need to...
Oh, you do?
All right, I thought for a minute you didn't remember, prepared, but you are.
Excuse me, did she pay?
You said you've got a check?
So this is the Mylar.
Okay.
I should walk on the sign, sign.
Where is it? Maybe I will. Thank you.
Yes, yes. You can put that away, you don't have to hold that.
I have to sign that, so...
And John wanted George to make sure that he listed that he was the individual, we're both the owners of 1, 2, 3, and it's...
Over here, it's upside down.
Okay. And you need to, I need you to sign that.
Watch it for the wires. John, see the wire here? Just be careful, you don't...
Where's the signature? Here.
Okay.
Martha, right spot to sign, right?
Right here? And, uh, today's date?
Special ten.
I'm surprised, not the fact, you usually like to take him as much space as possible.
Third, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So will we see you next year?
I hope not. Oh, well, maybe, who knows?
We hope you're done.
This has been such a... You don't know, you just...
So these as well, Martha?
Yes, all, all the copies, please.
So do we get to take the Mylar?
Um, yes, you take the Mylar.
And I make this up to the town?
Yes. Uh, 200 for lot line change.
Do you mind me asking? Did you have to pay like two grand to do a lot line change? Did you pay like two grand?
Yes.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't...
It's about like $2,000 to a lot line change. Yes, it's a lot is really, really tight.
Yeah. Is that how much you pay?
Yeah. Yeah, because I, that's just depending on how complicated it is, but it's on average, I believe that's how much...
One of the biggest problems, too, is that, that old, uh, lot plans are so old, so they have a kind of...
So I have ones, one, um...
It's good for us to know, you know, how much apples cost after that one.
It's funny, because the original plan, that hatch in...
Original.
And that was, you know, complicated, and so it would suffice to see the $2,000.
After that one, yeah.
Okay, so we do, all right?
We have, I think, five copies, and they have to, you know, the appeals period, right? Did she tell you about that yet?
I didn't send it, so you have four of these as well.
She'll tell you. You have to hold off, I think. She, they have to wait before they go down, that, register your deeds, or they go? Uh, special permit.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure you get this done by the end of the year, for the taxes, because All the taxes come to us because that, that law is still part of the estate and so the estate's paying that. And the deeds were done in February of two thousand thirteen, so according to mass law, it has to stay the estate for that whole year.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
January of two thousand fifteen.
You're clear.
That's how I've learned from you, Martha. Very much educated now.
All right, so you cut the Mylar?
Yes.
All right, and you're giving me the check?
Yes, I am.
And then, um, what I'll do is I'll record these with the town for tomorrow and I'll send you a copy of this.
That'd be great. Okay, I know you did that the last time.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I can tell John to go ahead and.
You have to apologize for the audience's crashing of papers. It's deafening at home.
Is it, is it?
Yeah.
Go home and celebrate. I guess you can't forget though to drop that off though. That's the important part, right? They have to bring that, Mylar.
Two.
To the registry.
To the registry, yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Doesn't count till you do that.
Right. Or John, if he's going to register that with the deeds at the same time, I don't know if there's one recording fee or more depending on.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.
Thank you.
Uh, George tells me that I have to apologize to the television audience, that currently when people are listening at home and we sign all these papers and move papers around, that it's deafening. So I, not having been there to do that, I apologize.
I know people who have.
You mean like when you move the drawings, it's too loud?
If I tap on the table like that, it's really annoying.
Well, there you go. So, so, um, you know, when I saw, uh, I saw you, I didn't know whether I was going to be nasty, you know what I mean, or.
Angelo, come on up. I'll be nice to you. I'll help you cushion the whole blow.
So I slapped him on the shoulder. I said, the prodigal son has returned.
Angelo, have you grabbed the microphone?
Don't see it.
Angelo, grab.
Don't see one.
Grab the microphone, bring a chair up and tell us what you're up to.
Um, my name's Angelo Cadello. Um, I've got a schedule.
Thank you.
Um, one oh one.
No, I don't, I don't, I, I didn't get one.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I didn't.
This is yours. Did you get one?
I got one. Thank you. Uh, for the one oh one, Newbury Park Turnpike, um, it's basically a schedule of, um, when the building is going to be complete.
So when you say masonry, beginning in April, you mean that, that the exterior facade is going to be masonry?
Yes.
And that's block? Architectural block?
No, block and inside brick.
A block on the outside, a brick on the outside.
Brick on the inside.
Oh, brick, brick facing.
Red brick?
Uh, it's a, like a tan brick.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Is it all the way around the building or just on the front facing the street?
No, no, all the way around. All the way around.
Okay, good.
Okay. It's not, it's not, is it shiny?
No, it's like a, uh.
Flat, it's a flat?
Yeah, they call it the, the jumbo brick. They're a little bit bigger than a regular brick.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's okay.
If you're by, it seemed like you had some rebars coming up out of, that I hadn't seen before, and maybe I just didn't see them, some rebar coming up out of the, uh, foundation?
Yeah, those were obviously, yeah, they, they, those get vented to the slab.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, those go get put in the block, the, uh, cement block that you go up here.
Okay, so it's going to take ten months, yeah, ten months from now to complete the project.
Yep.
Oh, go by quick.
Well, anybody have any comments on this? This is what we've been waiting for because we approved it pending getting a receipt of this.
Yeah.
And.
Didn't we get a tentative schedule the last time? I looked for it, but we didn't.
No.
No.
It was verbal.
It was verbal, it was verbal.
Yeah, okay.
Angelo.
What happened with the surveyor? I mean, Fred Ford isn't a surveyor. If, if he retires, why didn't, what do you have a crew he could put out there?
Yeah, I had some bad luck. I had Hancock and I had Al Murray Hancock. And then I went to Cammet.
Yeah.
And Fred Ford retired.
Right.
Moved, I don't know, Ohio or something, place far away, so we started all over again. I'm like, what? You know, it's like.
Okay.
And now, you know, we're back on track, but.
Who do you have now for a firm?
I got Cammet, still Cammet.
Oh, you still got Cammet?
Yeah, but now Alan.
Different project manager.
Yes, yeah, it's kind of makes it hot, you know?
So is there an, one of Woody's engineers looking after this?
Yeah, which is Alan. He quit Hancock.
Oh, he's, Alan is back.
Alan Rossel, yeah.
Oh, he's, so he's working for Cammet.
Yeah. Really?
And he's your engineer.
Yeah, it's like, no, I'm back with Alan.
Seriously?
Yeah, it's like.
All right, let's go back to the schedule. Now, you have the schedule here, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anything, like if anything gets bumped, are you going to notify Martha so we know what the schedule is or how is this going to work? Because obviously this is a schedule, but things change, so.
Or would the board like to have, say, bi-monthly updates or, or?
I'm driving by and I'm going to see him. And if that steel's not up.
Well, I.
If, if the steel doesn't start on January fifteenth, believe me, you're in trouble.
Well, why don't we look for an update like in June? Would that make sense?
Let's get an update in April.
April?
Yeah, when he starts masonry.
Well, but that's just going to be that, the structural, the steel, there's not.
April, June, and then, and then the summer, so it's three, three updates.
We can see if the structural is not.
We'll see it.
If, if it's going to be up the end of the month, you're going to start fairly soon within the next couple of weeks.
Some of the steel's getting there Friday. I'm on.
It's coming Friday.
Yeah.
Capone's doing it?
Capone's.
Yeah, okay.
And then, um, I guess they're drilling right now the beams, the beams, you know, like the columns that go, they're drilling all those right now because the, somebody got all the asphalt on the bolt pattern.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So it's, it's now pretty much, we're down to the end.
Well, John's point is well taken that we're, we're going to see.
Yep.
We're going to see the masonry, we're going to see the steel, but we won't necessarily see the electrical and the plumbing work, so why, that'll be, uh, May through July, so when do we call for a meeting then?
Oh, you mean June?
Yeah.
Oh, what a great idea. That's a great idea, John. Yes, June. I, I second that. Yes, yes.
Why don't we say June?
Okay, June.
Yeah, it's a good breakpoint, actually.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
All right, do we have to accept this or do we just?
Um.
Not, not really.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. We'll just have it.
I've got one question though. Um, the steel panels, um, you're saying the, the masonry, uh, the whole exterior is going to be masonry, so the steel panels are?
No, the masonry goes about halfway up on the building.
Got it, and steel panels above.
It's going to be the steel panels. We haven't decided, the architect, we're going back and forth, the, the steel panels or the, the metal stubs with the stucco.
Yeah.
Oh, drive it?
Drive it?
Yeah, because that way you can insulate the building good. Either way, you do the metal panels or the, because the masonry is too cold, that's why you don't want it all the way out.
Do we have an elevation of what this building's supposed to look like?
Yes.
Yeah, we saw something before.
Long time ago. Do you have?
I don't have a word, me, but you got the.
It's in the file, yeah.
No, I'll just go back in the file and take a look.
See what happens when you drag it out. You forget. You've got to finish it quickly.
It was supposed to be built.
Yeah.
Actually, it's a nice looking building. It is going to be a nice looking building.
Okay.
And the landscape.
The landscape.
And the landscaping.
And the stone wall. You can't get the stone wall.
All right, anything else?
One thing I'd like to ask you to do is sign at least one copy of the letter.
Yep.
You forgot to sign the letter?
Yes, I did.
Like, it's not real. Like, it's just, I didn't.
Want me to write today's date? Today's the third, right?
Yes.
What's up top?
Okay, so, um, if there are any changes in the meantime, um, you know, please keep us posted if anything slips or accelerates or whatever. And then we'll be in touch to get you, the first meeting in June?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, that would be a good break.
You better be careful. He might be turning a bad moon ticket on you.
June, all the exterior work should be done. At that point, from June forward, you're going to be starting the interior work. That's a good break.
Yeah, the roof should be on. I think, you know, I think we've had, we're doing the roof.
I would think so.
Yeah. Yeah, because once they put on, once we do the brick and then if the steel panels go on, they go right on top of the brick and then they put the roof right on.
Yeah, you're going to have to have the roof on before you do the electrical work for sure.
Yes.
Angelo, second meeting in June, second.
So it'll be the.
Third Wednesday.
The third Wednesday in June.
Yeah, third Wednesday in June.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, um, joint meeting with ZBA was set for tomorrow evening. Hopefully, I think we had gotten everyone saying they could make it.
Yep.
We got some preliminary information. It was sent from Sam and from, I guess, Howie. Did you forward it?
Yeah, it was actually.
Everybody should take a look at. That, that's what's on their minds.
Is that the original letter? I looked at it on my phone, so.
I just got it just, uh, this afternoon.
I just got it too.
All right.
No, it's not, it's not the same as the original letter that Eric wrote.
Okay.
So can you give us, just before we leave this subject, um, any insights that we should be preparing for for tomorrow night?
John, just before, uh, it's here tomorrow, seven o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
So, for the new members, they, and, you know, what you should remember is, is when, when, we went through this process originally for developing the accessory bylaw. For years, we had these illegal apartments in town.
The accessory apartment?
Oh, accessory apartments. We had these legal apartments in town and it was, um, kind of recommended by the building inspector. And also for people that were trying to, um, build in-law apartments that we passed, develop a, um, accessory bylaw, apartment bylaw. Um, to be, make these apartments legal so that Sam could inspect them, so there wasn't any hazards, and also give a, um, another, um, type of housing to the residents. And it was a struggle because depending on where you are in town, it may not be an issue and sometimes it is. The, the area that I have the most difficult time with, when we look at these, is the subdivisions where we're fighting with a developer who's trying to maximize the number of lots in a subdivision. And we finally come to an agreement, what we think is acceptable as single-family houses. And then suddenly we pass this and now it's legal for some of these subdivisions to come in and make rental properties out of them. And so these restrictions that were put on as far as square footage, we're considering that. And also that we have the, um, ability to do two-family houses in town. And we made the restrictions on the square footage and the percentage of the, um, original home, I don't know, what do you call it, um, primary dwelling?
Primary dwelling.
Because we didn't want people trying to skirt around going through the two-family and, you know, getting the same result by going to the accessory bylaw. So there's a reason why these numbers were selected. And I think that some people have a difficulty understanding that because not knowing the history of how we came up with these numbers. So there's different factors of where they came from. I don't know if I explained that clearly. So we're looking at, um, rental properties, we're looking at in-law apartments, we're looking at them, whether they're in, um, single-family subdivisions. And we're looking at trying to keep people from skirting around the two-family, um, bylaws. And that's how we came up with these numbers.
So I'm wondering, um, Martha, I know that, I saw what was sent by Sam and by, um, I think it's Howie or someone.
Yeah, it was actually Eric talked to Susan about it.
But I'm, I'm wondering if we could, I, I'm afraid that we go in with a, not a real agenda. And it just says everybody wants to talk about things. Can we, or could you work with Susan tomorrow on our, on an agenda on these, the items we want to talk about?
We already came up with that and I actually, I, when I met with the board before, we, we identified the different sections of the bylaw, what we want to talk about, accessory bylaw. And they also want to talk about things on Plum Island, but.
Right.
And the agenda basically is what Susan sent out, so it was the accessory apartment bylaws. Eric has some questions about the, the, um, Article three and the table of use regulations, um, and I, I don't know what that is.
Right, I mean, that's, that's the question I sent to you. I just didn't understand what that was.
And then the other, other one was building height. Um, this, the list that Sam.
Here or on Plum Island?
Overall.
Overall.
Yeah. It, it comes into more play in Plum Island, but it has to do with the entire community.
So I think those are the three priority items and that will probably take the entire time.
I would guess.
The other is a kind of a tickler list that Sam has been keeping of items that come up that.
That he'd like to have addressed.
That he'd like to, you know, sort of make sure that everybody's on the same page in terms of how it's being interpreted. So I, I'm anticipating that this will actually take a few meetings to get all of this stuff ironed out. And some of it we may move forward with amendments for, in zoning for Springtown meeting and other ones we may not have to do anything with.
Okay.
Realistically, for, if we're looking at keeping the meeting to an hour and a half, I don't think we're going to get past the accessory bylaw apartment.
Mm-hmm.
Accessory apartment.
Is that what it is? Is it an hour and a half or two hours?
I don't know, but I'm just saying that that conversation.
I think it should be seven to nine and that's it. No, nothing after nine o'clock.
I think that's reasonable.
Right?
Yeah.
They have an agenda as well, do they not?
Well, that is, that is their agenda.
It's the whole agenda. They don't have any appeals to deal with.
No, no, no. No, no, this is a off meeting for them.
Oh, got it.
Any questions from anybody on this?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh, there's another thing that we, on that too, is, is right now, being the, um, special granting authority for the accessory apartments is new to the ZBA as of last year, so that might come up. I'm not sure, just so you know.
That's part of it, because I, I think they, they traditionally see themselves as being a board that grants relief and so it's a little.
As opposed to a granting authority, right? I understand that. That's very different.
The role is, is a little confusing to them.
That's a fair concern.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we'll, we'll meet again tomorrow night at seven. Caldwell Farm, we, um, we contracted with Tim Meehan to do a survey of the property that, uh, is between Caldwell and the residential property to its east. And, um, I, I think the work has already been done. They've staked out the front pro, front corner and another stake has been, um, down about a hundred feet. They haven't finished the staking of the rear property, but it's pretty clear that there's been some movement on the part of, you know, where the property line has been over the years. And so, once it's drawn, uh, and we can go out and take a look at it, it may be as early as next week, we can just see just how close and how intrusive this, and how intrusive it's all been, so.
I'll ask you later.
Okay. So any, Martha, do you have any questions on that?
No.
So I think our, our next step is really just to get the final, final, uh, lines, not drawn, but out in the field and then we can check them out. I'll contact the HOA and the HOA members can go down and take a look at it themselves, I think.
So this is just delineating the property lines for Caldwell Farm?
It's delineating the property line at a corner of an entrance that the HOA asked us to look at as a possible entryway into the trail. And so we said that we would look at that and when we went out there in the field and looked at it, we said, oh my gosh. This is, if it's Caldwell property, it looks like it has, it may be the single-family homes property.
Oh, I see.
So we decided, let's find out exactly where the line is.
I see, I see, okay.
So that's why we did it.
Okay.
Okay. And, and that's it. So we'll, we'll move forward on that. Master plan, um, we'd asked last time and we got some names from people. We continue to want some names from you all, if you have any.
I don't swim in those waters. I don't really have a name. The, the one Martha came up with is fine with me. She comes from good stock, from a good company, so. Well, not you, the, the other lady, uh, she was part of the, uh, what's his name's firm on the Unicron Street, right?
Who's the consultant you're looking at right now you got a quote from?
Oh, Sue Brown?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
That's the one.
So, um.
Yep.
Next Tuesday, Martha and I will have a meeting with Tracy and Jeff to go over their thoughts about who should be included from town government and others. And then based on all of that, we'll come up with an idea of, of how we should start organizing a update committee. And then in the meantime, the second part is that Martha will be sending out, um, well, finishing up the RFP first and sending out an RFP to, to get interest.
The, the last letter there, the RFP, Martha, Martha made a good point. We were talking about it the other day. Don't we really want an RFQ, request for qualifications?
Could be.
Choose the best firm for.
And then negotiate the price.
Negotiate. I don't, does, in this state, do we do two envelopes, one with the qualifications and the other one sealed envelope of the price?
Price.
Yeah. And that's done in a lot of places and I, I've never seen it.
Can ask it.
I've never been around that happening.
Can always ask for it.
I've always been, found that appealing.
And I would, I would defer to Tracy on how she wants to deal with that.
Well, she just did it in West Newbury.
Pardon me?
She oversaw the process in West Newbury, so I, I'd find out how she handled it there.
Yeah, but I think definitely we should go with qualifications and not price.
Right.
We want to pay the right price, but not.
And there's not that many folks in the business anymore. I mean, there's not as many, you know, as twenty years ago, there were a lot more people doing master plans than there are today. I mean, everybody's doing EIRs and stuff like that, but not many doing master plans, so. So we'd hope to get all of this stuff organized by, before the Christmas break. And so we're ready to move forward in the new year on the master plan.
Do you want to say anything to the public about their interest?
Yes, thank you very much. And so, um, to summarize, for those who are watching, um, we, um, at Fall Town Meeting, we had a sixty thousand dollar amount approved to do an update to the master plan and an update to the open space and recreation plan. So, so what we're doing now is putting the process together and looking for consultant help. And anyone who is out there who might have an interest in being part of the committee, they should contact Martha Taylor, who is our town planner, either directly by coming in and chatting with her or sending an email, I think. What's your email, is your email online?
Pl, yeah, it's online, Planning Board of Town of Newbury.
Planning Board, uh, Town of Newbury. So we encourage anybody who's watching, who has an interest, um, to come forward. That would be terrific. The Municipal Building Committee, there was a meeting on the twenty-second of November, uh, that Eric did here. It was a well-done presentation, uh, equal to the one he had done with, uh, the joint boards and committees that had met. Uh, the unfortunate thing was that only a few, um, uh, people from the public were here. So we're going to be doing another one, I think, in late, uh, December?
Um, in December. The committee's meeting tomorrow morning and, um, I'm expecting a date will be set.
And is the meeting, now we also have a meeting on the ninth with all the, all the boards and committees?
Another joint meeting.
And is that open to the public?
Yeah.
Okay. So on December ninth, which is, uh, next Tuesday, for those who, who are, have an interest, we will be having a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, us, the Planning Board, the Municipal Building Committee, the Finance Committee, and the, what else?
Capital.
And the Capital Planning Committee. And so we ask you to attend that. Uh, it'll be here in Town Hall, uh, the Selectmen.
I believe it's going to be here.
We think, think so. You should check, I guess, on the date to make sure, but, uh, Jeff was pretty strong that he wanted to have it here in Town Hall.
He wants to have it televised.
Because he wants it televised.
Oh, that makes sense, yes.
Right. So, uh, it's important. Uh, the Municipal Building Committee presentation, um, is online and those who are out there who have an interest in it should, um, uh, click on it. It's a terrific presentation and, um, we need your support and help. Thank you. Okay, new business. EBI Consulting letter for Two Fruit Street. Ms. Martha.
Well, I think, we, we received a letter and I think you all got copies of it, from a company called EBI Consulting who is looking for comments on whether a monopole, a hundred and seventy-foot-high monopole at Two Fruit Street will, um, have any impact on historic properties in the area.
Pearson Lumber Yard.
And, um, they sent this to us and also a copy to the Historical Commission. Um, I did speak with, I communicated with Ginny about this, um, because there are some potential zoning considerations that would come up. But she said, um, you know, basically this is asking specifically one, you know, one thing and that should be answered. Um, but we can also reserve the right to comment on the future, on the zoning issues.
Oh, yeah.
Well, can't we simply say, in your, in your, in your response, you note however that in our zoning ordinance, that these facilities are allowed only along Route one?
Well.
Why can't you say that?
Um, Ginny.
This is coming from a consultant. It's not coming from a law firm.
Uh, her, her suggestion was to limit the response to their question.
You can't answer the question and say, oh, by the way, you might want to reference the, the zoning area?
You know, we could mention that.
Answer the question and then.
Reference the zoning.
Tell them the rules.
Yeah, you did.
We encourage you to.
You did, absolutely did. You did, you absolutely did.
Well, it's a special permit, it's a special permit.
Well, a special permit, but, first of all, they, don't they need a variance? Isn't that a two-pronged thing?
No, it's a special permit process, but in this case, we allow a max of sixty-five feet, they're looking for a hundred and seventy, it's not allowed in the district that they're proposing it, and, um, it probably also doesn't meet the setback requirements.
Right, there's a lot of problems with it, but that does, doesn't that mean they need some relief from zoning, because they got, in addition to the special permit?
Well...
No, they need a new site.
They, yeah, they don't meet any requirements for the site.
That's what I'm saying, if they, if, so, they either need a new site, or they need...
Variance.
A variance, and, I'm not sure a variance is a real great idea for, given what they want to do.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not jumping up and down about a variance for that site, although...
Yeah, that would be a use variance, that would not be a dimensional variance.
Well, it would be a dimensional variance, because they're looking at one-seventy instead of sixty-five, so, it's, it's both.
Well, did you see the location of it, though, it's way back in, it's way behind the pile of, of wood.
Martha, just going to Ginny's comment, holding the response to just the historic sites, if nothing else is mentioned, there's an implication that, oh, the town must be agreeable with it.
Exactly.
That's right, that's why I want that.
I think you really have to reference the bylaw.
Thank you, George.
I agree.
Right.
Well, I, I think that's what she meant by saying, you know, limiting the response in the same manner, but specifically reserving the right to comment with regard to all zoning issues, so...
But, yeah, I think, I, is she saying that you can't even reference, like, can't you reference a section of the zoning that says this is not allowed there?
Well, I think we could reference...
I think you can.
You could do two things, we could do exactly what Town Council says, which is usually a pretty good idea, and then Martha could have a side con, a sidebar with them, just give them a ring or email them, and just separate piece of cards, and say, hey, read the zoning.
I think a separate, but a separate correspondence.
Followed up by a letter.
Pardon?
Followed up, followed up by a letter.
Yeah, and nothing, it, it needs to be written, I think, because I think I like George's concern, that is, that, oh, well, they don't have a problem with it.
Right, silence, right.
I, I wouldn't vote for a letter that didn't acknowledge it at all.
Yeah, so, why don't you work on a letter, and then you and I will, and send it around to people, so they can see it, okay?
So, are you, are any of you aware of any historic properties there that would be impacted?
Didn't you used to live down there?
Historic properties.
Yeah, we were talking about Fruit Street, and we're talking about the, I, I didn't see the site, I would, I didn't get to see it today.
It's the Pearson, part of Pearson, the back, backside of the...
It's the back, it's the back, where they sell the Christmas, that's where they sell the Christmas.
By the deer farm, by the deer farm way back there?
Yeah, I think so.
It's, um, it's right here.
See?
Where's the pooh-poohs?
So here's fruit here.
Yeah?
It's right here.
If safety considerations and that, that might be a bad place.
So it's like, a hundred fifty feet behind?
They could have put, they could have posed to put almost two-hundred structure...
It's still not allowed.
Construction equipment, this is a tree guy, the history.
I'm talking, I'm talking, it's, it's, you know...
That doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't make any sense.
You don't want one right next to a cathedral, okay?
Okay.
I don't see anything historic that I can come...
No.
No.
I don't see anything, yeah.
No. Are we done with that?
Yes.
Anybody? Uh, Liaison Reports, Board of Selectmen, well, there was all sorts of information in the paper, but, were you at the last meeting?
Um, the one right before Thanksgiving, yeah, I was there.
When they decided to have the election?
That was the meeting before, when they decided, or they'd set a date, and I think they voted to confirm that.
Yeah.
At the last meeting.
Was there anything other than that, anything?
Well, they've got the thing that they, the Borrego deal has been delayed.
It's a solar?
Until January.
Linda McCamick has now been put on the Board of Assessors.
Oh, congratulations, Linda, isn't that nice?
Uh, and that they, uh, voted to, I'm not sure who's doing it, I think it's, um, probably Tracy, to reach out to property owners on Route One relative to the Town Hall slash Police Department possible location, and someone's going to do that, so we'll probably find more of it.
Basically, see if anyone wants to sell, yeah.
Basically, see if anyone's interested in selling property, um, so, that's interesting. Uh, anything else on that, on Board of Selectmen?
No, I was there too.
Nothing else, right?
No.
Okay.
It was an early meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was fairly early.
Pretty early.
At MVPC, we met about a week and a half ago, two things, the major thing, really, John knows more about than I, the first is the Stormwater Collaborative is, is an MVPC thing.
I don't know what that is, to be honest with you, unfortunately, they, they're running a program right now, which happens to happen right when I'm having things done to me in Mass General, so hopefully, I start going to that the first of the month.
Well, I...
Did you go?
I went, um, yeah, Yvonne Boswell and I went this morning, and it was a follow-up to the previous meeting, which I wasn't at, um, but in, they're, right now, they've been getting comments from all the member communities, um, to include in a letter to EPA regarding the draft permit, um, so there is a, a draft of, of that which has been put together, and, um, I can, I think you should have gotten a copy of that, Joe was going to send it out this morning after the meeting, but I can send that around to anybody who's interested in seeing it, the deadline is the twenty-ninth of December, they're also encouraging individual communities to write their own letters, um, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got one, I got pieces of it drafted, uh, clearly a letter from us to the federal government is beyond my pay rate, pay grade, so I wanted to go over that with Tracy briefly, um, just know, let her know what we're up to, and then we'll put it out, and probably over her signature, and a copy to MVPC, and they can include that stuff, but I got to talk to you and Doug too about those, the issues, and Yvonne, I haven't, I've done it myself, but I haven't bounced it off my board of directors, as it were.
So, and they've also put together a list of, of requirements, um, for the permit and various other things, um, so...
They have put together a list?
It's still very preliminary, they did put together a list, yes, which I have a copy of, and I...
You have a copy of that?
You said "they" is who?
MVPC.
MVPC, oh, really?
Yeah.
So who does that, is that Joe?
Um, probably Joe for that, yeah, I think so, and he, he and Gerard are, are both working on it.
Ah, Gerard, okay.
The, in general, the permit is a little bit different, it, it's reputed to be easier, I don't necessarily see easier, I see no worse, and I see different, and there's some areas, if, if we didn't have four, our four receiving water bodies weren't impaired, it would be easier, but we, we're discharging, no matter where we go, it's an impaired water, and so, you know, that, it's pretty much the same as we thought we had before, which is good, it means it's nice that it's not worse.
Okay, um, second thing, John and I, Jeff was there, who else from here, at the Great Marsh Symposium on the thirteenth, and that was, again, sponsored a bit by MVPC, but others...
Well, among others, yeah.
Yeah, and that was a really good session, I thought.
Yeah, the, uh, the thrust of it was, was very important, but the thrust of it was, uh, protecting the marsh itself as an ecosystem, uh, it didn't deal very much with, um, the adaptation that human beings have to do, there's two different things entirely, I mean, it's very important that we save the marsh because of the importance of marshes in, on the planet, but it didn't say an awful lot about, uh, routes to go to keep from getting flooded out, and clearly, we've got some enormous problems ahead of us in Newbury.
And so, so, we, John and I both met this fellow afterwards who had given a talk, whose name is Chris...
Steve something, I can't remember.
Hilke, Hilke, who's from...
National Wildlife Federation.
National Wildlife Federation, who I think said he was going to contact us about starting a, I wrote it down, Climate Change Adaptation Program, which I guess is going to be done in each of the towns along the coast, from Salisbury, Newbury Port, Newbury, Essex, Ipswich?
I couldn't see...
Anyway, I, they're part of the bay, Essex and Ipswich are both part of the bay, yeah. So, and they have money to do, they have money to do this, and the extent to which they get into modeling for sea level rise, I don't know, but, uh, we just don't know what they do, but Lisa, Lisa O'Connell, O'Donnell?
O'Donnell.
Uh, they're in the process of doing it in Essex, so, we'll have to see what they have in mind, but they're going to contact us.
Yeah, I spoke to Lisa afterwards, she said that, nothing much had happened yet, uh, as far as adaptation goes, but it was, it was getting underway.
Supposedly, what, what I gathered from his talk was that they make recommendations about adaptation for the natural environment and adaptation for the man-made environment, so, that supposedly should answer some of our questions.
Oh, yeah.
For roads and bridges and stuff like that.
The first, the first step is to do exactly that, assess our vulnerabilities.
What it is, where's the vulnerabilities, so, what I don't know is, if they, he calls and we, and he wants a meeting, I, I think that the three of us should meet with him.